Okay. Thank you for the health of council. Thank you for the health of the citizens and constituents who are able to be with us. Thank you for the health, help, health and assistance of staff that make all that we do possible. As we start to see some sunlight from the pandemic that we have been going through and things start to get busier and our plates become more full, help us to have the wisdom to decide and to weigh and properly decide what is best for the citizens of Greenville, all the citizens. Help us to have the wisdom and judgment to do what is right and what is fair. Help us to be better councilmen. Help us to be better citizens. In their name we ask. Amen.
Amen.
The citizens of Greenville, the citizens of the public for which you stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice on the front.
George will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWerkin.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of November 8th approved as submitted unless there any objection. Seeing none, thank you very much. We have a few folks who signed up to speak to council tonight. Just a reminder, we have a three-minute rule, so when you speak to council, give your full address and be mindful of the clock. I guess the clock's in front of me, so, you know. Thank you very much. Mr. Matt Vilex, Vilex or something. Excuse me if I don't pronounce it correctly.
No problem. I've heard worse. My name is Matt Veyou.
How do you, how do you pronounce?
Veyou.
Okay.
Yeah.
You must have a heart. It must be an everyday thing.
I get that a lot now.
Thank you.
My address is 200 Button Willis Street in Taylors. I wanted to come before you all today to address what I believe is the most urgent issue of public safety in the city of Greenville. It's a heavy issue that nobody really wants to dwell on, one that I feel just cannot be ignored. As you may be aware, defenseless human beings are currently being torn apart, dismembered, chemically burned, and thrown away at 1142 Grove Road inside of the Greenville Women's Clinic. I cannot overemphasize the seriousness, importance, the horror of what happens at that place. My message is this, and that is abortion is murder and it's time to start acting like it. As a Christian, I believe we are all called on and commanded to expose evil deeds and darkness and interpose for the vulnerable and fatherless. We are told by God of this obligation in Proverbs 24 where we read, "Rescue those who are taken away to death, but back those who are stumbling to the slaughter." If you say, "Behold, we did not know this," does not he who weighs the heart perceive it? Does not he who keeps watch over your soul know it? And will he not repay man according to his work? We all know where and when babies are being murdered in the city of Greenville, and ignorance will not be sufficient when giving the account before God. I believe that it is only the gospel of Jesus Christ that can free your heart from bondage to sin. And so we routinely go out and proclaim this gospel to those who take their babies to the concentration camp known as Greenville Women's Clinic. You may not be person-aware, but at this point, the city of Greenville has been a hindrance to this, to this gospel proclamation, as law enforcement has intended to silence the preaching of Christians and have accused the gospel preaching of, quote, "reaching the peace." But you should know that there is no peace to be disrupted in Greenville while the practice of modern child sacrifice continues in the city. The judge of all the earth tells us that whatever you did not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me. He soberly adds, "Apart from me, ye who are cursed, to the eternal fire, prepared for the devil and his angels." I don't want to be associated with the devil and his angels, and I'm sure you all do not either. So join with us in repenting of apathy by ending abortion now. Make Greenville a sanctuary city for our preborn neighbors, and we will be praying that God blesses you and your obedience to him. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. What's the address you were talking about? You raised, of course, a big issue nationally and otherwise, but specifically to Greenville and the city of Greenville. I think you're talking about, somebody help me, that's, that's not an address in the city of Greenville.
This is the address of the Greenville Women's Clinic, 1142.
It's in the county, sir.
It's in the county. Yeah, it's not in the city of Greenville.
Gotcha.
Just want to clarify that. It's not, not in the city.
Same.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Ordway.
My name is Lois Ordway, and I live at 213 Perry Avenue. And before I start, I have to apologize to Councilwoman Fleming, I misspelled your name and I didn't catch it till copying. I'm here to speak to you tonight about, to request the building of a neighborhood park in the West End neighborhood. Recent occurrences make those of us living in the West End realize we must push the city of Greenville for a neighborhood park. The discovery that the land earmarked for our park had, has been sold for development and the completion of the West End Small Area Plan. The preservation and establishment of green spaces is at the top of the comprehensive plan's stated goals. Our neighborhood green spaces, few to begin with, are being rapidly gobbled up, generally at the cost of our canopy coverage, already the lowest in Greenville. And while Unity Park will be close by, it is not a neighborhood park. Crossing Academy will continue to be dangerous for children and families and alike. An analogy often used about canopy trees is appropriate here, too. If you need a single light in the upstairs bathroom, 50 lights across the street won't help you. In addition, the West End is the only neighborhood in all of Greenville that does not have a park. We feel it would be foolish to pin our hopes of a park on when or even if the state decides to sell the small employment, sorry, state employment site as suggested in the Small Area Plan. Seventy-three neighbors have signed a petition, which is before you. A hundred percent of those who are asked don't canvass during football season, church, and we need a neighborhood park where children can play and neighbor, neighbors can gather. Sitting in the shade, it's, time is long overdue. We hope that you can make this happen and happen soon. The last page, sorry, the last page on the packet is a map of the neighborhood. The advantage to canvassing is that I could see the number of vacant lots and empty buildings. I've highlighted three that sort of are the geographical center. I'm not an urban planner. They're all sort of where Perry, Ware, and Rhett come together. One is owned by the United Ministries, one is privately owned, and one is owned by a developer who plans to build a very large townhouse on it, but has not yet. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Anais Morris, and I live at 4 Queen Alley, Greenville, 29611. And I'm here to speak on the development at Lee Street and Doleth that the Parker Group is doing or wants to do. I come on behalf of Reverend Fleming, President of the West Greenville Neighborhood Association, and the West Greenville Neighborhood Association members in support of the rezoning of Doleth, Circle, and North Lee Street property. As a resident who walks in the neighborhood, most of the houses have been abandoned there and just sit vacant. Crime, drugs, and trash plague the area. The homes that face Lee Street must deal with noise and walking traffic through their yards. It is an unsafe place in our neighborhood. The Parker Group project is a great opportunity to get this cleaned up and add livable, sustainable housing in our neighborhood. We ask that City Council approve the rezoning of this property so that the developers can move forward and bring this project to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drew Parker. These are both are item 15A, I see.
Good afternoon. Drew Parker. Address is 147 Welburn Street, Suite A2. Thank you all for your consideration of our proposed rezoning on Lee Street that Ms. Anais just spoke about. It's our goal with this project to create a well-thought-out, mixed-income community that is consistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As many of you know, we have already spent several months working to overcome the many challenges that any developer faces when attempting to provide affordable housing. We have made considerable progress, but the added density we are requesting is a vital component. In regards to the rezoning request and how it aligns with the comp plan, I'll outline just a few key points. Our project boundaries are within a high, defined high-density node along a commercial corridor. We are seeking to add inclusionary housing proximate to the central business district and public transportation. We will be adding missing middle housing units, which will create an alternative to existing single-family homes and large multifamily projects in the area. Last and important to note, there are six homes on the property, and all of them are vacant. So as a private developer, we are excited to have the opportunity to bring affordable homes to an infill location so close to downtown. It's a pretty hard thing to do. We are continuing our work with the Greenville Housing Fund and other public and private entities to ensure the success of our mission. Thank you all for taking the time to consider this proposed rezoning as we strive to help Greenville grow in an inclusive and thoughtful way.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All righty. Thank you. Item 8A, we have a couple presentations tonight. Mr. Rainwater is, I believe, here for presentation. Who on staff is kind of leading this?
The city attorney.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, I can hop in here as well if needed.
Okay. All right. Sure. We're ready.
Ready for us to start then?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Frank.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, I'm Frank Rainwater with the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. I have Catherine Kelly in here assisting with us tonight. It's a pleasure to be with you again. I think I spoke to you back in February, if I have my memory correct, and talked about the, the basics of redistricting. I'm going to update that tonight for you with some information on how the census numbers have turned out for Greenville, for the city of Greenville, and to kind of bring you up to speed. In essence, I think in looking at the numbers, Greenville City has one of the more challenging plans to work on this year. I want to highlight some of the facts that are driving this, some of the data that we have in our reports. But in the end, Greenville is going to have to make some decisions. As discussed back in February, you have to balance several factors. You have to balance the need for one person, one vote in the Fourteenth Amendment. You're going to have to consider and balance the need of the Voting Rights Act and representation or the opportunity for minorities to elect a candidate of their choice. And then you have to take into account the traditional redistricting principles, which will include the compactness, continuity, minimize voting precincts, your core districts, preserving the core districts, as well as preserving communities of interest. So you have this report, and we're going to share our screen, and I'm going to highlight a couple of charts in here for you. Mr. Mayor, I'll be glad to take questions during or after whatever suits your preference. I'll leave that up to you. To begin with, I want to begin on page one of the appendix here, and to me, this is a pretty telling fact of what's happening in Greenville, in the city of Greenville. This shows your population over the three censuses from the 2000 to the 2010 to the 2020. You've had a tremendous increase since 2010 in your population, and when you break it out by the demographic groups, the racial groups, you see there's been a huge increase in the white population in the city. You've had a decline in the black population, and then you've had a increase in the, in the other race and in the ethnic group of Hispanic communities. But these numbers are the latest census accounts for your city as a whole, and it's going to drive some of the decisions, not decisions, but it's going to weigh heavily in some of the decisions and the key factors you have to take into account. So to go back, I'm going to talk about one person, one vote, and I want to look at page three here in the presentation. And what we have highlighted for you is your four council districts and the population in each district. And if you look at the graph on the right, this is showing a representation where you have, in District Four now, you have over 23,000 people, almost 24,000 people in District Four. Your ideal population or your target population to have a perfect one-person-one vote is 17,680 people. So that means District Four has to give up approximately, almost 7,006, or excuse me, just over 6,6254 people. And those people are going to have to be moved into Districts One, Two, and Three. And, and for any new audience here, when we talk about one-person-one vote, just as a quick example, what we emphasize is that under the Fourteenth Amendment, under the equal protection clause, we want districts to be of equal size. If you have a very simple district, let's say you have two districts, and you have 100 people in one district and 200 in another district, those 200 voices count half as much as 100, because they're competing for one representative, 200 voices, as composed to the other district. If you only had 100 people, that district's only having to listen to 100 votes. So under the ideal situation, you would make those two districts 150 each. Well, that's what we have to move here and, and move these 6,000 people out of District Four into Districts One, Two, and Three. As I mentioned, in February, we talked about something called deviation. The Supreme Court and the court rules have said that you have, if you're above a 10% deviation, you have to redistrict. You are allowed to go somewhere below 10%. 9% is not necessarily a free pass. You could be subject to challenge. We are recommending a deviation of 5%, but that's just our recommendation. You may choose to go lower. We've worked with some cities that have a 3% deviation. Some cities and counties are doing 6%, 7%, or even 8%. So that's, that's a local decision. But to emphasize the deviation, you have to take that district percentage over the top, over that ideal, I should say, District Four, they're 35% above. Then you take your lowest district, which is District Three, they are 15.36 below. So when you take the range of that, or basically if you add it without the algebraic value, you get a deviation there of 50%. So when we talk about a 10% deviation, you're talking about having a district on average that is not more than 5% above or 5% below. If you went with a recommendation of a lower number like 5%, you're talking about a range of like 2.5% above or 2.5% below. So you narrow that gap there between that, that over and under, so those voices are kind of evenly spread. That's the challenge. It's a little unique here. In a lot of the other counties and cities we work with, you have growth in some areas and decline in others, and there's giving, they're shifting among all the districts. Here, it's a little unique. You're very lopsided with all the growth in District Four, so you're going to have to move populations into One, Two, and Three. So now let's talk about the Voting Rights Act, hold two pages over. So here, the demographic statistics, as I mentioned back in February, under the Voting Rights Act, we're no longer under preclearance requirements, and that was a Section Five analysis the Department of Justice used in a different standard. Now we have to look at a Section Two analysis, and I talked about a test, the Jingles Test, and there's three prongs to that. But, but the challenge you have here is when you're looking at your districts, District Four there, or excuse me, let's say District Two and District Three, right now, they're majority, excuse me, minority influence districts. Those districts are not above 50%, but they've dropped down to 40%. And then when you look at the bottom chart there, that percent NH, that stands for non-Hispanic DOJ Black Voting Age Population, that's the VAT they talk, or BVAT, the Black Voting Age Population, those are down in the 30s. When you look at the total minority population in the city on that top bar there, or excuse me, the top segment, that total line, you've got 23% of your district is minority, and total voting age population at the bottom is about 21.8%. So ideally, you would think that you would have at least one majority district, or certainly an influence district in, in the city of Greenville. But the challenge that I noted is that you have to move 6,000 people out of that District Four into District One, Two, and Three. There's not a lot of minorities in District Four. So it looks like you're going to have a challenge if you're trying to preserve two districts, the numbers may simply not be there. You probably have a way to, to work this around, to preserve one district as a stronger majority district than the other, or maybe even a minority-majority district. But this is going to be a little bit more difficult of a challenge because, because of the change, significant growth you've had in the white population that's been in one district, as you move that out or move population out, you have to be aware of what you're doing to your minority populations in Districts Two and Three. So that's something you're going to have to pay attention to and look forward to, or keep, keep an eye out for as you go forward on this. And then just on the recap, the next page, in addition to those criteria, you have to make sure that when you draw your districts, the districts are drawn continuously. Every part of a district must touch another part of a district. They can't really look like a checkerboard. You try to minimize voting, the splitting of precincts. I mean, you try to minimize splitting voting precincts. Sorry, got a little tongue-tied there. You want to make this easier on the voters. You're trying not to split too many. However, in an area like Greenville with a lot of population, population growth is not equal, you're going to split, you're going to split some precincts. You would like for the, the districts to be as compact as possible. There are statistical tests you can do with that, but it's largely an eye test, does it look compact? Again, you don't look like a checkerboard. But as I mentioned in February, the two big things you have to consider is that you are certainly expected to look at what is your core district and what are your communities of interest? Again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, sitting in Columbia, we can draw these lines and make these numbers work out to fit these other criterias. But you also have to respect what is your communities of interest. Those don't necessarily pop up on the map. You don't necessarily see those in the numbers, or they're not readily identified in the census block. So when you're looking at your data, you have to be careful to make sure you don't, you don't intentionally split a district that has some common feature, feature that's really important that you don't want to split, or your core district. So I mean, starting point is here, is District Four is going to have to give up 6,000. Where do you take those people? Is it on one end or the other, in the middle, or all across? I mean, you kind of have to go back and look at that, what districts are important to maintain, and how does that affect the other districts going through that? Just as a reminder, especially for the public, I mean, Mr. Mayor and members, the lines have to be drawn somewhere. You're going, you're going to split somebody somewhere where there's going to be a community or a street or a neighborhood or something that gets split, and that's just the way it works out. Districts, lines, well, they're going to go down a street somewhere here or there, and it's going to put people on opposite sides of the streets in different, in different districts. But it's best to have this done in advance, oh, excuse me, it's best to set your criteria in advance so people know what you're concerned about, to have some public discussion so you can weigh all these factors. It may take multiple efforts or multiple iterations for you to get to a plan because of the complexities with that. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I wanted to share about the, about the census data and how it's affecting your challenge. We'll make one other comment, that this, that the numbers here were based on the census geography at the time of the 2020 census. You will, it will be necessary to update this a little bit, if you've had any annexations in the past year, to get a little bit closer. But other than that, Mr. Mayor, I'll be glad to take any questions from you or members of council.
We'll have a lot of questions in the months ahead, for sure. Probably, I think we should create some kind of working group of council, like maybe three members of council to kind of spend a little time on this. Like to make the recommend, I think we've done that in the past. It's very peculiarly something council needs to be engaged in. And I just had a quick question about contiguous. Contiguity is required, is you use it, you answered, I was going to ask you, I think it is required in South Carolina, is it not?
Yes.
But, but you can be pretty creative in, in having contiguous.
I think, I think it's a little bit more of a challenge, or maybe a little bit more flexibility with the cities, because you have, you kind of span unincorporated, excuse me, unincorporated areas, and I believe it's been the practice where you can kind of skip over. I know you can in a county when, if you have a body of water separating or if a river runs through it, you can, you can skip over that river, so to speak, if it was not there. And I think that practice is maintained at the local level for unincorporated.
For council's knowledge, I think we, last go-around, we created, we reached down from, we're Lillian is, all the way down to Pleasant Valley, and that took us down to Gus Robe, which is kind of a corridor of sort, and so there are ways to do that, too. All right. I'm sorry, John.
I do. Hey, Frank, John DeWerkin here. Thanks for being with us.
Glad to be here.
To what extent, so I'm a district representative, to what extent in the law that's, in the law is allowed for elected officials to be a part of the process? I've never gone through it. I've been a casual observer of the legislature, but that's my, that's my experience, and I, I don't know. Lillian, you're probably the only district representative that's been through this before on this.
Lots of time.
Lots of time.
Yes, I had to go to Washington, DC the last time to prove that I was black. That was very interesting.
I should know that.
And, oh yes, in 2010, I was, that was very interesting. But yes, you are required, and this is, you're required to have input and to say it, and we, as a council, have to, to vote about the deviation, as he was saying. The Supreme Court gives us the guidelines, we have to do that. We have to have input from our community. We want like the communities of interest. We have to have, in fact, there are some people here tonight who came just to see this presentation, to see what was going on, and, and will be a part of it. And so yes, it is something that we'll be doing. It won't be easy, but, but it will be, not be as difficult as you think it is. As long as we have representation, as long as people have an opportunity to vote for people who they're interested in and do that, we'll be able to do that. So, and we also, just because they presented these, this information and documentation, we can also look at consultants, we can look at others who can give us information. I've already been contacted by the League of Women Voters, they already have a map. So I'm just saying. So yes, we do this, and it's, it's, sometimes it's very difficult, but sometimes our attorney will, will give us some, some better ideas of where we have to look, but we'll work through it and, and get it done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, John, if I can add, I mean, this is an ordinance, it requires two readings, and it's just like anything else you vote on, you have to study it and understand it. And, and as the council lady just described, I mean, to get input and listen to all factors, just like you do everything else. But what's changed here is that since we don't go under preclearance, you don't have the Department of Justice looking over from a Voting Rights Act. So the emphasis we're trying to make is that you're responsible as a council for your plan, and if you get sued, it's better to lay your criteria up front, that you say, this is what we agreed upon in advance, and this is what we tried to adhere to on that. So just the more information and the more you can share with the community and hear from the community, but you have to vote on this, and ultimately, it's your decision. So you have a lot of say on, on what you want to be responsible for.
Thank you.
And as you see, the first thing we have to do is we have to have a public hearing, but, and then we have to ourselves make sure that we vote but, and then we have to ourselves make sure that we vote on that deviation range, that what, that that's what they are recommending, and our attorney will discuss it with us, but we can also hear from from the public who can, you know, give input on on some of those things, so as not says, we we got together, and our staff is very helpful, and we're working it.
Council, this is Mike, if I could just briefly just talk about next steps, um, what we'll need to do, you know, in the.
Mike, Mike, hold on just one second, let me get.
He probably, he's probably going to.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, what council will need to do is we'll need to adopt a resolution in the near future outlining the criteria, this is most of them here, uh, on the page that Frank's highlighted, that that kind of sets your guidelines, that will be a resolution that, um, council will vote on, and then we'll, uh, begin the process of rolling up our sleeves and drawing the lines, of course, this is, you know, council's map, you know, council will need to, you know, be involved, obviously, we'll need to vote on it, we'll need to get lots of opportunities for public input and comments, and we're planning on doing all of those things.
So I thought he was going to address it, maybe I will ask my question. Question for either Mike Pitts or Frank, Frank Will Brazington here, but for the benefit of council, as well as public who are, uh, watching this with interest, what would you say is the absolute deadline, either date of a month or time of a month in 2022 where we should conclude this exercise?
Uh, uh, Mike may know it better, but in general, you need to do this before filing opens in your next election, I'm not sure when your next election is, but you need to give people plenty of time to consider this, uh, before your filing opens, so whatever that date is, I'd say a month in advance of that date, at least.
That that won't be until 2023.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank, appreciate your time.
Thank you, good luck, let us know if we can help anymore.
Okay, thank you. Presentation from Community Works.
Mayor, did you want to take public comment? We did have.
Is that separate?
We did have public comment related to this item.
Oh, okay, um, seems like we have a, do a public hearing later on, but this wasn't a sign-up opportunity?
No, it sure wasn't, and we will have, you know, many formal public hearings, but we just thought it was a good idea to have a placeholder on the agenda for folks to to speak tonight, if they wish to, just about the process and the and the and the information that Frank presented.
Counsel.
Yeah, I agree with that, because, um, when people saw it on the agenda, then people prepared themselves to come and to speak to it, so I wouldn't want them to go back, because I'm sure they'll come back again, and we have an official.
If anybody wishes to make comment at this time?
On the redistricting.
Okay, thank you. Eight B?
Thanks, Mr. Manager. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening again, and council members, appreciate, uh, your time this evening, uh, I just want to introduce, um, Ms. Tammy Hoy Hawkins, she's the CEO of Community Works, um, her and I go, I don't want to say a ways back, but we've known each other since my days in Charleston, but, um, she took over as CEO of Community Works starting in January of 2020, and prior to that, she helped as a consultant to launch the current Greenville Housing Fund, GHF, and during her days as a consultant, she worked for seven years on the redevelopment of Spartanburg's Northside Neighborhood with the city of Spartanburg. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Tammy Hoy Hawkins.
We know Tammy.
Not a stranger, but, uh, and I live at ten twenty-seven South Main Street, so, and of course, our headquarters is on Antrim, so lots and lots of neighbors and friends, and again, I'm super excited to be here tonight, uh, my first time, actually, uh, that I've been in front of you since being coming the CEO in January 2020, because we know what happened soon after that, so, uh, I'm excited to be here, and really just an opportunity, I know we've got some new council members, and obviously some some old friends, um, of the evolution of Community Works, and really to give you a refresher, and just also to share with you some of our impact, and also just keep in mind the things that we can do, in particular in your district, and to support the communities, uh, here in in Greenville, so if you just want to go maybe to the third, the third slide. So just as a reminder, um, again, many of you remember Deborah McKetty, who is a great leader here in in Greenville, who really helped to launch, uh, the the Community Works initiative, but we are a nonprofit community development financial institution, you know, in government and nonprofit, we love our acronyms, so we call ourselves a CDFI, so we're actually certified by the US Treasury Department to do active lending, uh, both in small business, affordable housing, and community lending, um, and again, we we do that in a variety of of ways, um, next slide. So just to give you a little history, for those of you that that don't remember, believe it or not, we were the first Greenville Housing Fund, we call that 1.0, uh, 2008 is where we started, I see Councilwoman Fleming shaking her head, and the mayor as well, um, and again, it was between the city and the county and United Way coming together to address affordable housing. Ironically, I was in Charleston at that time and had launched a housing fund with Mayor Riley, uh, and actually came up to Greenville and met with many of you all about the work that we did there. Um, over time, we evolved, uh, into a broader community development loan fund, because as you know, the housing crisis kind of put a damper on the work that we had planned to do, um, but one of our key focuses has always been, uh, homeownership and asset building through down payment assistance, and and really, uh, looked to enhance that by, um, starting a credit union, so many of you are familiar that we launched a credit union, um, back in 2014, uh, the, really the goal around that was to support alternatives to payday and predatory lenders, a lot of the folks that were coming to us at Community Works for financial coaching and assistance, um, were really hit hard by high-cost lenders, and so, uh, many of the work that we did with the credit union was really to support that. Um, we have merged that credit union, many of you may know, into Self-Help Credit Union, which is a national, uh, CDFI credit union, um, in our same location, and they continue to expand, and we continue, uh, to work with them as well. Uh, next slide. Uh, we, um, again, addressing the needs of the community, we had a lot of individuals in particular, um, some of our minority businesses coming to us, looking for access to credit and access to capital, because that's really what we were founded on, um, so we became an SBA lender, so we're an SBA microlender, um, and so we have been doing that really since 2014, um, and 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 really the city, um, invested in that, you know, you were our early and our starting investor in 2008, but then when we decided to do microlending, uh, we got some funding through, uh, through the city and economic development to really launch that, uh, so again, really expanding that work around small business, uh, lending as well. Uh, fast forward, 2018, um, uh, we helped to launch this Greenville Housing Fund 2.0, I know everybody knows Brian Brown, who's amazing and doing a great job, and so really the goal of Community Works was to be that backbone organization, to really help expedite the launch of the housing fund, um, and once Brian got on board, to really provide that that support and stability, and and again, we have legally separated, but we work very closely with Brian and his team to support affordable housing in the city and and in the county as well. Um, Deborah, uh, re-retired from Community Works, and I came on board in in January. Many of you know us, uh, deeply from our work with the Paycheck Protection Program, and I'll share with you a little bit more about that, but I know many of you council members called us to help small businesses that were being impacted by COVID, um, and then Councilwoman Fleming, you helped us launch our Women's Business Center, um, so the SBA Women's Business Center to focus predominantly on women, in particular, black women businesses to grow in in the city. Um, next slide. So we have grown, and thanks to your, uh, investment early on, over time, this just gives you a snapshot of our growth over over time, we are statewide now, so we're not just in Greenville, but again, this is our headquarters and our home, um, so we continue to provide small business and affordable housing lending across the state. Um, next slide. Um, you can go to the next one, um, so some of our, just just so you all know, and of course you have this PowerPoint, the areas of investment that we focus on, so again, we were founded on affordable housing, we were founded on asset building through homeownership, um, but we also, uh, invest and finance community facilities and community projects, so many cases, we've worked with United Housing Connections, we've worked with Allen Temple, we've worked with a lot of the churches, as you know, to kind of redevelop and revitalize, we work closely with Sterling, uh, on the land bank there, um, then again, we we have our small business line, so just wanted you to be aware that we're not doing quite as much consumer lending now, since Self-Help, we're partnering with Self-Help, they have a lot more tools and resources, um, but we do help folks get out of predatory loans, and we still do that with Self-Help. Uh, next slide. Development Services is probably the most important thing that we do, just despite our, just our lending and our access to credit and capital, uh, the Women's Business Center is is mainly focused, everything from, you know, the back-of-the-napkin idea to high growth, to going to the next level in the ecosystem, is to support women entrepreneurs and and growing their business. Um, you guys are a big partner of us in our homebuyer education and providing financial education to individuals who want to become homeowners, I know we're working, working closely, um, in Nickel Town with, um, the craft construction, um, uh, on that project, and making sure that that project moves forward, and we're trying to get first-time homebuyers in that community as well. So again, all the lending that we do is supported with wraparound coaching and financial education and technical assistance, so spend a lot of time on that particular component. You can be really good at your business, but you may not be really good at managing your business, so that's really important for us at Community Works. Um, next slide. Uh, this just highlights our Women's Business Center, I won't go into into too much depth there, um, uh, it's, obviously, it's consultations, it's training, it's a lot of different initiatives, it's it's located at our one hundred West Antrim location, um, right now, so that's where we have a lot of our our meetings. Next slide, uh, next slide, uh, next, so I just want to share with you a little bit about the impact over time, so again, with our homebuyer assistance program, uh, working with with the city, we've helped, uh, over twenty-six first-time homebuyers, um, you can kind of see there in, uh, in the the numbers and the really the area, uh, area meeting income, uh, we did launch a program previously with Greenville County Schools, um, we'd love to see that opportunity in the future to do more, um, we also work with Prisma Healthcare Systems, so we're seeing a lot of employers who are interested in providing support to their, um, uh, employees through homeownership, uh, and it's a great asset and wealth-building opportunity. Um, small business and microloans, um, again, from that initial investment, we've done over six hundred thousand dollars in capital to small businesses within the city alone, um, and and that's about twenty businesses, um, and again, we continue to really grow that component of our portfolio, as we're seeing more demand in the ecosystem and working with some of the partners. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is our financial coaching, so you can get a sense, this is a big part of what we do, our one-on-one coaching and education to, in particular, of the, this is all numbers within the city. Next. And then again, what we were founded on, affordable housing community lending, um, in many cases, uh, we're working with a lot of the nonprofits, um, again, we have the Greenville Housing Fund, and so sometimes we're partnering with Brian on deals, uh, and investing together in in participation lending, uh, but to, over the years, we've done over five million uh, dollars in affordable housing in the community, um, and of course, worked a lot with churches and local nonprofits, but as I mentioned before. Uh, next slide, this is just a snapshot of some of the businesses, if you didn't know that we've we funded, we have a lot more, but just to give you a sense, everyone, from folks on Main Street, the Jamaican Restaurant, uh, to Soy Candle, which we're so excited about her, she actually bought that business from another business right during COVID, um, many of you know, Unlock Coffee, um, and a couple Vintage Barber, so depending where you get your haircut, you, we might, we might have funded those, uh, those, those businesses in in the city, so, uh, next slide, uh, and then just a snapshot of some of our affordable housing and community lending activities as well, um, in partnership, not only with Greenville Housing Fund, but also, uh, in individually. Uh, next slide. Paycheck Protection, just, uh, I know you're probably interested, um, so Community Works, uh, as a CDFI, we were eligible to support the PPP program, which we hope we never have to say those letters again, although we know that really helped a lot of businesses, we helped fifty-seven businesses within the city of Greenville, that either were turned down or denied by a financial institution, or did not have a banking relationship, and who came to us to access those those COVID resources, and so those individuals probably would not have access to those if not for Community Works. And then we were a key partner with Greenville, uh, County with their CARES program, and we helped them to deploy not only small business grants, but also, we launched, we were the only partner who helped with the hospitality grants, um, so we did about a hundred and twenty-five, uh, businesses, uh, that were all restaurants, and and a lot of those within within the city. Um, so moving forward, we got a lot on our plate, as you can tell, between community, uh, lending, financial coaching, and entrepreneurship, and growing the small business ecosystem here in Greenville, um, we're working a lot with Morrell and his team, and this is really exciting, many of you know, we launched a partnership with Village Launch to focus specifically on a neighborhood-based strategy to support black-owned businesses, uh, as we know, not only housing gets gentrified, but so do businesses, so how do we preserve businesses i-in our very, uh, fabric of our neighborhoods, um, and also working with Furman on their Greenville Start, so they're doing a lot of the education, and we're doing a lot of the access to capital, so trying to make sure that when folks have their business strategy, um, they have somewhere to go to access the credit and the capital, uh, that they need. So, um, I won't belabor this, but really excited to continue our relationship with the city and continue to grow the relationship, and I feel like I'm starting new, anew again, so, um, I'll stop there, and if there's any any questions for me, as well, I know it's a busy, busy night, so.
Summary, by the way, I know you have your hands on all kinds of things, and that was pretty well covered it. Any other questions, comments, council?
Great job.
Yeah, great job.
Well, thank you, and and please, as you know, I know that Councilman Gibson's always reaching out to me about stuff in his district, as well as, uh, Councilwoman Fleming, so if there's folks that you feel that need our services, you know, please let us know, um, I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you, and also just to formally introduce myself to you, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council, we have some, uh, board members to appoint, the youth commission's tonight, Councilwoman Brazington, I think you've got the first nominees.
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to recommend for appointment to the youth commission, the following individuals, who I'm not sure that they're with us, but they are, would you please stand as I call your name here, uh, first, recommend for appointment, Matthew Kotler of Greenville High School. Um, second, Emily Wallace, uh, Veritas. And then finally, with with, uh, forgiveness begged in advance, Brooks, I'm going to pronounce it Lehne, L-E-H-N, also a veritas.
Okay, any other nominees? If all have favored these, say aye.
Aye.
Most ayes have it, they are so named, Councilwoman DeWorke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I do know that I have at least one of, uh, our nominees here, it is my honor to continue, uh, what Councilwoman Brazington started, and that was recommending the following, uh, appointments to the youth commission, uh, the first is Mariela Ramos, is Mariela here? Okay, well, that is number one, and the last but not least, I know Doyle, Doyle Gibson is here, there's Doyle Gibson.
Yes.
Excellent, Mr. Mayor.
And I'd make a, I'd make a motion.
Excuse me, um, uh, and Doyle is from the next school.
Right, and since he's the only one here tonight, he gets to be chairman of the youth commission. He wants to be chairman of the youth commission, I appreciate it, all right. Thank you, those nominations are made, uh, any other nominations, if not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As I said, but thank you.
One of staying.
Being here tonight. Okay, now we know why. Performing for you there.
And I wouldn't bear to.
This is on the consent agenda, yes, sir. So move. Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Record 14A.
And ordinance amending, chapter eight, article two of the Code of Ordinances to provide for certain economic development stimulus incentives and matters related thereto.
Motion, wait a second. Second, second, okay. Mr. Mayor, I I have an amendment to fourteen A that, uh, if you'd like, I'd like to read it. It says, uh, I move to amend the ordinance in order to provide that with respect to annexed commercial businesses references, referenced in section three F subsection B, uh, is stricken in its entirety and replaced with the following. A commercial business annexed into the city of Greenville, after the effective date of this ordinance, provided such business as a party to a negotiated annexation agreement with the city, which such agreement does not include the water covenant required by the Greenville Water System as a condition of of providing water service for certain properties in proximity to the corporate limits of the city.
Second, yeah.
Councilman DeWorke, did you write that?
I I.
So, Alex.
Spent a lot of time on that.
Impressive.
You read it well. Thank you so much, we appreciate that amendment, that's a.
Second.
Second that, now, Mr. Mayor, would do, would you like the?
Well, shall we explain the intent?
Uh, that's what I was going to say. Do you want to?
The intent, man.
There we go.
Yes, so.
I was thinking specifically.
The impact of the amendment is that when we annex a commercial business in, um, if the business is not under a Greenville Water Annexation Covenant, so they're not forced to annex by by right of that covenant. to annex by right of that covenant, then they will have an opportunity to negotiate with city staff, and so they're not granted a business license incentive by right, it's by part of the negotiation with that commercial business, and that allows us the flexibility in how that annexation benefit is administered. Who were annexed after the adoption of this ordinance. And so as we are approaching potential annexation targets, we'll have a chance to offer them, if they're a commercial business and they fit the city's overall goals for annexations, we'll have this as a tool to offer.
So it becomes a tool across the board.
Yes.
A little bit confused when I heard that.
So the effect of the amendment would be if you are coming into the city under annexation because of a water covenant being triggered, then the incentive is not available unless that's against the intent of council. Because those folks are being annexed in not by choice, but by virtue of their water service.
Well, I would still have a toolbox. That's what I was intending, that there'd be more, that we can pick and choose a little bit better. So I'm not sure that's.
Mr. Mayor, is it premature to withdraw all that amendment at this point? Or do you want to?
Well, or to figure, we had to come up some language. We're trying, looking at the, we have some that are coming in for the water covenant.
Right, and they knew when they signed those covenants that they would come in under, just like any other business.
That's right.
So I don't know that there's a necessity that the city or council grant them some type of incentive.
That's right.
Once we're contiguous, they have to come into the city. So I think that was the reason for the carve-out.
This allows us to offer the incentive to businesses that are being annexed in not by virtue of the water covenant, but by their decision.
I agree with that.
You've essentially already captured those businesses that are under the water covenant. We just need to become contiguous to them.
Were we talking about the apartments?
Yeah, I see, retail stores.
Not the same.
And a shopping center, for example. We have some examples right outside here, in fact. Still would be fine with providing a few years for a retail store to plan for that annexation, once they're contiguous. But what I was really aiming at was apartments and multifamily. That's the specific category.
We parved that, for sure.
Mayor, may I offer something up, please? The way that language is written, it wouldn't preclude you from entering into an annexation agreement with somebody with a water covenant. It was just the intent of the amendment was that the water covenant standing alone wouldn't qualify. So there would be nothing that would prevent a separate negotiated agreement with water covenant property if that was the desire of the city.
That would be the intent, whether you're water covenant or not, would like to have the tool in the toolbox, if you will. Right.
May I ask Mike a question? So Mike, what I'm hearing is that what the amendment does is it removes it as a matter of right to that incentive, but there's nothing in that amendment or in the code section that prohibits us from granting that incentive on any other grounds. Is that correct?
Correct, pursuant to an arms-length, you know, negotiated agreement. Correct.
Yeah, but does that mean we have, some get it, some don't? Some don't? I don't know.
They could be part of a negotiation.
Yeah, I was only gonna, I was just focused on the multifamily because it's just such an unusual circumstance. I'm not really talking about some retailers get it and some retailers don't.
I'm thinking it needs more discussion, but I don't want to postpone that.
We don't want to postpone this.
Can we make a, can we make a motion? Can someone else make a motion? And I guess this is Robert's rules, Mike, on withdrawing that amendment.
Yeah, we can withdraw.
Because it hasn't been voted on yet.
Correct. We can withdraw the amendment. Could come back in a few weeks with a amendment to the new.
We could, Mayor, we just have to have two readings on it.
Okay.
I like that approach.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll do that as the approach, because we're not, none of this is imminent. This is all for 2022.
Just need to get it done by the end of this year.
So Councilmember DeWorke.
Mayor, I would ask unanimous consent or to move.
If there's no objection, we'll object. Because we don't want to hold this up.
It was, it was good. I have to, it's something that's much easier. Not to.
Usually, Councilman Dow usually doesn't.
I got it, I got it. And it could be a better time for Ms. Hawkins to still be here, but, you know, this 14A does pertain to some incentives that we've talked about over the last several weeks regarding grocery stores, and we've added childcare providers. So grocery stores in our special emphasis neighborhoods now have an incentive, childcare providers have an incentive throughout the city of Greenville. You know, this speaks to, it is one thing for us to know where we want to be as a city, and I think Greenville 2040 really helped us outline that. But getting to that vision and eliminating some of the barriers that have been in place towards that is the hard work to be done. And with these incentives, these two particular incentives, which are very near and dear to my heart, and Ms. Hawkins, I hope you will help our businesses who want to start up grocery stores and childcare centers with these incentives. I just see it as a big step forward. It is my understanding that we're the first city in South Carolina to do it. I haven't confirmed that, but I've heard it, so we're going to claim it, and I appreciate all staff's work in pulling it together. So with that.
And as we appreciate the staff help on this, we reduced the business license across the board for many, many categories in a significant way.
I did have a call from a constituent with a concern about the fees when paying licenses by credit cards. I just want to make clear, Matt, a business can walk in, a business owner can walk into City Hall, write a check, and avoid a credit card fee. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am, we accept check payments via mail or in person at City Hall.
Okay, thank you for that.
I want to say to Ms. Hawkins that one of the programs that they have with the new businesses they start is about childcare. This particular ordinance is recognizing the lack of access of childcare, representing both a barrier and so preventing employers from attracting individuals to the workforce and all of those kind of things. So this will help reduce a new business with childcare, so we're excited about that.
Okay, did we have a motion in a second?
Yes, sir, we do.
On the original, okay, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
14B. An ordinance amending in the Code of Ordinance says Chapter 8 pertaining to business license tax and other businesses regulations, amending Chapter 48 pertaining to vehicles for hire and matters related thereto.
So move. Second.
Motion in a second, in discussion, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 14C.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 2.36 acres of real property located at Douthat Circle and North Leach Street from RM1 to RM2.
So move. Second.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Amstey. 15A, first reading.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 2.36 acres of real property located at Douthat Circle and North Leach Street from RM1 to RM2.
So move. Second.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye, receives first reading approval. Sorry, Mr. Graham, I didn't mean to interrupt running up here. 16B.
An ordinance to convey surplus city property located on Cowan Court to United Housing Connections for purposes of affordable housing.
Second, yes.
You're good. There are no questions, I'm good.
So we have two rental units planned, two rental homes planned.
Yes, so these are two properties that there are RFP United Housing Connections applied for, and they have supplied these drawings preliminarily, and they have two rental units that will be under home restrictions.
Okay. All right.
All right, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to convey surplus city property located on Hollywood Circle to Genesis Homes for purposes of affordable housing.
Second.
Second, okay.
So I had a question. So Rebecca, this is a vacant lot right now?
Yes, that is a vacant lot.
Okay. Are all of those rentals around Hollywood Circle?
Yes, most of those homes.
Okay. Okay.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. All of those, thank you very much. Good shot for affordable housing.
We are going to 15D, sir. An ordinance to appropriate $112,800 in the miscellaneous grant fund for the 2021 Community Policing Development Micro Grants Program.
So move. Second.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, if I may, this grant would be to promote our Project Safe Neighborhoods initiative. That initiative is something that everybody here in Greenville agrees on, which is reduction of violent crimes. So this money would go to help us in our partnerships and building a sustainable Project Safe Neighborhoods program.
Any questions? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15E.
An ordinance to appropriate $68,304 in the miscellaneous grants fund to reflect an award in the amount of $34,152 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Fest Partnership Program and $34,152 in matching funds from the Law Enforcement Special Reserve Fund to purchase body armor for the Greenville Police Department.
So move. Second.
Second. Motion, second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
15F.
An ordinance to appropriate $47,996 in the miscellaneous grant fund for the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control Healthcare Preparedness Program grant.
So move. Second.
Motion, second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Very persuasive, Brian.
Good job.
An ordinance to appropriate home investment partnership funds in the amount of $53,418 awarded through the American Rescue Plan and Community Development Fund 111.
So move. Second.
Motion, second. Rebecca, you want to say a word about this?
I can do a quick overview. So we were awarded through the home program, the American Rescue Plan, just over $1 million. So right now, as we're going through the regulations and working through the plan process, where we'll have public comment period and bring it back to you all for an amendment to our annual action plan, we are looking to appropriate a 5% admin and pre-planning award we were given through HUD. So we're just looking to appropriate that so we can contract with Greenville Housing Fund to assist us in that. Over the summer, we had a coalition with them and several other partners, so we're really excited to continue that capacity as well.
All right, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Can I ask one question before we go to community development? Do we have a list of people waiting to, for housing rental as well as homebuyer property that community development can reach out to?
So we receive calls on a daily basis for rental housing, and we do have a resource list. As we talk to these individuals and find out their individual stories, we try to narrow them down to who we feel they appropriately are paired with. We also have a long list of people who are waiting to buy an affordable unit, so constantly sharing that with other developers that have those units as well as ours.
You see, that's what's important, getting the information out. Thank you so very much.
A resolution to adopt in principle the West End Small Area Plan.
Second.
Second. Mr. Mayor, I just had a boyfriend too. Hey, Jay, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Number one, this plan still provides for flexibility in terms of some design moving forward. That is, it's a plan, it's not binding, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Yeah, I have a question too, Jay. So in the PC hearing on this one, there was a lot of discussion about the properties along Pendleton, the backup to Arlington, and for lack of a better term, Rob, you remember this, splitting those blocks.
this, splitting those blocks.
Right.
So I have the draft, I don't have, you know, what came from that? Have we addressed that discussion in the plan that we're adopting now, or...
We have the consultant here, I think that's a good question for Rob.
Rob, do you know what I'm talking about? Okay.
Draft and split those blocks.
Okay.
Arlington, the planning commission had a lot of concern about that, since it wasn't technically in our boundary. We didn't want to overstep because that's not a neighborhood that we met with.
Right.
Okay.
But we did, we subdivided those blocks into Arlington frontage and Pendleton frontage.
So in that severing of those blocks, what fronts Pendleton, excuse me, what fronts Pendleton for uses is kind of different from what we would think should be fronting Arlington. Was that addressed?
Exactly right. So the building types get specific by the zone. So Pendleton, for instance, on the Pendleton frontage, building types that have residential on the ground floor are not in that, but you can have residential on upper floors, whereas on Arlington, they're really all residential building types that are single-family or two-unit or three-unit attached.
So we're not necessarily, you know, you're not allowed to plop a restaurant facing Arlington.
Right, you got it.
Okay, all right, good. And then there was, you know, at the time, this has evolved over time to where there was a development planned formerly known as the mosaic.
Yep.
And has, you know, the roadways that were attached to that proposal, which has now been withdrawn, have those been taken out?
No, there is a, well, specifically, yeah, we had never really...
It's more visual.
Well, but it was for connecting Ware, so Ware and Perry could make a block, because that's the giant triangle.
Right.
So there's a dotted line in there that says proposed roadway.
Okay.
But as you know, it's such a higgledy-piggledy group of lots.
Yeah.
That road may go, if it goes, it does, it may go a little bit to the east or a little bit to the west. Right now, it's at the gap between two existing housing units.
Okay. So to use your term higgledy-piggledy, which I think we need to put in our repertoire vocabulary.
Yeah, sorry, it's a technical term.
No, I love it. You know, this is a visionary document.
Yeah.
You know, the Greenville Development Code writing will codify it.
Yep.
So this is a vision, it is not an ordinance per se.
That's right.
At all.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's got some very specific recommendations for the ordinance team.
It's the building block for the ordinance team to look at, for the development code team to look at, but it's not a zoning ordinance.
Right, and we've already started those meetings with Lee and his team.
So what you're saying is if there's a variance, let's say you've got a project that comes forth and it meets most of the criteria, it's excellent project, that there could be some variances, that you've got the guiding principle and you're heading toward that, but it's not a binding...
No, the development code is what's binding, right?
Rob, I wanted to ask you, in terms of parks, do y'all have information about some parks, possibilities to put some neighborhood park or in part of the West End?
Yes, but what we did, what we only identified...
I think that was in the weakness section, I'm not sure, but anyway.
Beg pardon?
Was that in the weakness section about neighborhood parks? Okay.
No, it's actually in one of the goals that, you know, as you go through this process, and we'll just take a classic development that comes into you, and they have a percentage of open space.
Right.
Required, it's PD. Rather than just putting in some open space.
Right.
We suggest that that be publicly accessible neighborhood park space. So we show one example of how you would use that criteria and get a park where a park belongs, where it's accessible to everybody, not just the residents or owners of, users of a particular property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And indeed, ordinance. Say aye.
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 A resolution to approve the First Amendment of the City of Greenville Fire Services Agreement